Have we got anybody wishing to speak, Paul?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, what's this? Oh, it says, that's fine. Okay. We shall start our interim meeting. So obviously, it is live on YouTube and I don't think we've got anybody wishing to speak unless someone comes in the next minute or so. So we shall go swiftly on to item one, any apologies?
Apologies from Buckinghamshire councillors White and T Mills.
Okay, thank you. And any declarations of interest? No.
I should just declare that I'm a Buckinghamshire councillor, as you've got the Town and Parish Council charters, but it's not prejudicial interest.
Okay, thanks for Robin. Okay, so item three on the agenda is the Town Council awards to receive the notes of the meeting and to agree the recommendations made. Anybody got any comment on that? I've lost my piece of paper here. Okay, sorry, John's got his hand up there. Sorry, John.
Well, yeah, just to formally propose that we accept the recommendations, obviously because I was part of the meeting along with Ruth and Mike and Paul and Bethany, and we had a good, a good roundtable discussion about the ins and outs of this. And we think we've come up with some reasonable recommendations, which Paul has very helpfully summarised into the attached paper. The only one thing I'd say is that in terms of going out for nominations, it's more going out for suggestions, because obviously the the decision to, to award any of these awards, including the two we've got, or three we've got at the moment, would be in the gift still of the, of the Town Council, although of course, the one, the idea of the wares, the Mayor's award would be in your Geraldine. But yeah, so the idea would be that would be perhaps looking for suggestions rather than nominations as such. Would be a way of involving the people of the town to, to, you know, because we're not omniscient, we don't know everything that goes on in the town, of course. And therefore it would be useful to get some feedback from people to say, oh, where's so and so? With, oh gosh, they were doing amazing stuff. Why, you know, we should be recognising that in some way. So I would propose formally that we accept the recommendations and then obviously move forward with that into our informal this meeting.
Okay, thank you for that. And Councillor? You're muted at the moment.
Yeah, I just, just a small thing where it's the paragraph that's talking about changes to what is presented and possibilities could be a medal or a gavel for the mayor. And I was just thinking that if it was like a little silver gavel, I don't know, I was thinking along the lines of what we presented to Barbara when she had like a little mini, what's it called?
Oh, yeah.
Nice.
Yeah.
I was, I was thinking rather than a gavel, it might be nice to have a little swan. Um, because when I was mayor, I used to wear a swan brooch and lots of people used to comment on it, you know, other mayors and things, saying about it being a swan for Buckingham. So that was just a tiny addition that I thought of after the meeting.
Yeah, maybe, yeah. Or I did think maybe some vase or a paperweight with the Buckingham swan engraved on. Because the men wouldn't want to wear a brooch, would they? Okay, councillor Stutbury, you had your hand up, didn't you?
Yeah, thank you very much. Firstly, can I thank the councillors for taking the time to look at this? Secondly, can I thank them for the recommendations? But thirdly, though this is a council-centric exercise, obviously, we, we perhaps should open, the way we open this up for volunteers. I've always, the bit in the report, which was quite constructive, where it said we shouldn't be automatically awarded awards because we've got awards, I thought was probably right, so that the awards are actually of greater value when they're awarded. But I do think whether there's some way we need to open this out for more community engagement on the awards are, we are 17 privileged people who are a council. What we may believe to be the most important person in the town may not actually be who the town thinks is the most important person in the town for these awards. I think my only comment would be that I think we have to have proper social engagement for recommendations to, because oh so often, we've been to meetings and it's councillors suggesting something for an award from the meeting. And of course, we know lots of people, but other people in the community know vastly more people in their circles. I would just ask that we include something about increasing the outreach for the nominees.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Smith?
Yes, what Robin's just suggested is actually enshrined in the document, the following paragraph, paragraph five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. So I'll drop that there. All right, so are we?
Councillor Try has a hand.
Sorry, I didn't see your hand, councillor Try. I'm looking at the one at the back.
One at the back.
You've got a white hand on your.
Well, that's, that's up as well, yes.
Yeah, that's up as well.
Paragraphs three A and C mention civic and community life of Buckingham, but three B doesn't make any reference to Buckingham. Are we considering people that make an impact on the environment from outside to Buckingham or within Buckingham to outside?
I'm not sure about that. Councillor Harvey, have you got?
I think if a local firm invented room temperature fusion, which is going to benefit the whole world, including Buckingham, I think we'd probably want to recognise that.
Yeah, that's, that's an inside, isn't it councillor Harvey, inside Buckingham, you know, in, in Buckingham, helping the whole world. But what about if something happens outside Buckingham that is affecting Buckingham in a good way?
Yeah, I mean, somebody, I don't know, say a local farmer manages to create some mechanism for managing the streams on his or her land, such that there's less flooding in the town, even though they're not within the parish. That might be deemed to be something that would be worthy of, of, of an award. So I wouldn't, yeah, I mean, the, the environment has no boundaries, does it really? So I think, I mean, I think it's a, it's a good challenge and a good question, but my view is, is let's not constrain it too much. But obviously, we are focused on Buckingham because we are Buckingham Town Council, but I mean, I wouldn't exclude anything. You know, it's going to have an impact on the town, that's great. It's going to have an impact on the world, that's also great. It's about, it's about doing what we can to support our general strategy of tackling climate, the climate emergency and so on.
I think, I still think I would like to see, you know, the words maybe a tenable link to Buckingham attached to it.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Stren Clark?
Ah, thank you, Mayor. This was just a query really, about time scales. Presumably, it's too late to do anything for this year. This is just a query.
Yeah, what, sorry, Paul wanted to speak on that.
So the, the idea is that after, after this meeting, we've got an informal meeting. So it would be possible for people to nominate people at that formal meeting, assuming that awards are agreed now to be made once new councils in later this year.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Councillor Newell?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to add to councillor Try's question because they are Buckingham-based awards and my understanding was that the Environment and Climate Champion one is a Buckingham-based award as well. So it would be someone living or working in the Buckingham area as the other awards are as well. So I agree with Martin that it is a Buckingham-based award.
Yeah.
Even though the impact of whatever that person's doing can be wider than Buckingham.
Yeah. So we all happy accepting the recommendations on, on that and then we can discuss further the awards at the informal meeting afterwards. Councillor Gateley?
Maybe, thank you. Maybe because of what's just been discussed, we need to amend section B to include Natural Environment and Climate Champion, a personal organisation or business with a local link, maybe.
I agree. Madam Mayor, I've had my hand up for some time. Would you be kind enough to take me? The, though paragraph five says we will issue a press release and, and so on and so on. When I was saying about public engagement, I think to really get public engagement, we need to go the third, a little bit further than issuing a press release. The response was, oh, it's all covered in paragraph five. Well, issue a press release between January and February each year for nominees really doesn't cover it as far as I'm concerned. I think we need to actually push this out a bit further to the envelope, get to the call of Buckingham and organisations. So I would like to enrich that a little bit by saying, issue a press release, use all social media outlets we've got and maybe go as far as to do an article about the purpose of the awards. Because we need to go out and get this, because I've, if you looked at the appendix of the names list, we all could have chose those names very easily. And what I'm saying is, I want us to get out to those people who aren't in that covenant of people who get nominated. Because as I said earlier, there's great people out in our community, it may not have to do with the 17 of us and they may not have to do with any of the organisations we've already nominated. And I think we need to open the envelope a little bit more. That's why I said, what I said about going out, because we are not everything in Buckingham, we're just 17 lucky individuals who sit around a table or on Zoom presently, making decisions. So I'd like to enrich that to go a little bit wider than issue just a press release in January and February each year. I don't think that covers it. What I was trying to express enough, I was trying to be understated and the response was it's in five. Would, would that be a reasonable suggestion to enrich that so that it's done in a more fluent way? I know councillor this is going to come back, but I, I am conscious that we are a privileged bunch of people and, and the list of people who have been nominated reflect us.
Yeah, we can think about that. I'm not sure, I can ask Paul how we can go about that. Not everybody's going to look at social media on the Town Council site, are they? To get out to people generally who don't normally partake in council things. Okay, councillor Donahue?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the same issue would be that not everybody buys a newspaper to read the press release. So I, I would second what councillor Stutbury's saying, because, you know, while there are, you know, say the Young People's Award, we've got, we've had hundreds of young people that have come through the youth club who volunteered. And we've got young people now who've been volunteering since they were 13 and they're 18 or coming up to 18 now. So, you know, there's a lot of people that, I mean, we've got contact, we've got local groups, local organisations. I'm sure our communications officer can put an email out and contact everybody that way, maybe.
Yeah, sure. Councillor Smith?
Thank you. Both Robin and Lisa come up with some good ideas, but the, the paragraph says should seek nominations. It doesn't limit to how you seek those nominations and it then goes on to say issue a press release. So all these things can be taken into account and any additional thoughts that come to mind when we get to the stage of seeking nominations?
Yeah, true. Councillor Ahmed?
I was just going to agree with Robin, also proposed that obviously not everyone buys a newspaper, not everyone is on social media, so we could do something simultaneously. I recently opened a Facebook account and saw something similar where someone was asking questions about organisations who have been helpful during the pandemic. And it was on one of the groups and it has a lot of people on there and a lot of organisations which I wasn't aware of. So I think if the Town Council were to do something like that through Facebook especially, because people seem to be active on there to do some sort of, I know, opinion poll or whatever. But literally, within one day, you can get so many suggestions for, for all those categories.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So are we just, we'll accept that, the recommendations for now and then move on in the informal one to discuss this further. Is that okay?
I just wanted to second Margaret's question for three B, the Environment and Climate Change Champion.
Yeah.
About the wording of that.
Okay, thank you. Are we all agreed with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so we shall move on at the moment to the item for the Buckingham Town and Parish Council Charter. So to receive and discuss the written report we have on that. I'm sure there's lots to say on that one. Anybody, councillor Smith? You're muted.
I beg your pardon. I propose we accept the recommendations.
Councillor Anthony Rolfe?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. Thank you. And councillor Stutbury?
Why agreeing with both proposer and secundar? I think it's worth noting in the report that, that sections on transferring and working with town councils on moving properties probably needs strengthening up from their point of view. The document, in my personal opinion, I'm not commenting on that, and some of the elements around planning are fictional until such time as the constitution is amended, which we've managed to achieve. So the document in itself was wrote when, before that change came in. I believe that it'd be worth seeking some understanding what the constitution will be, because if they say they want to engage with Town and Parish Council on the planning side, we need to see the beef on that. And also land transfers, asset transfers and devolved services and those type of things, it's all a bit loose. We've all been involved in discussions about these matters for a long time. The document's hopefully going to remain a live document, not a fixed document, when I say it evolves over time. Because it didn't give specifics, it didn't give definite, it didn't give yes and no answers. So that would be my comment on it, though happy to agree the recommendations. The weakness in the report, in my personal opinion, was it started from a pretext of only including officers of councils in it. Though if you included every council in Buckinghamshire, I expect the committee would have been far too large. Though I respect the work they've done, it's come to us as a document to note, to comment and amend. But we were not actively engaged during the producing of that document, which is something why I say it should be a live document. Because the situation's going to change, Bucks is going to evolve and this shouldn't be an all seeing or dancing thing, because I don't believe it isn't. But I'm happy to agree the recommendations, they're just my personal gut feeling around the document.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Ahmed, were you waiting to speak? No?
No, I wasn't, sorry.
Okay, so councillor Try?
I'd just like to say thank you for the working group of four councillors for putting, you know, this together and I think we'll just accept the recommendations.
Yeah, agreed.
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 Agreed, happy with that.
Agreed.
Right, we shall move on to item five, which is this display screen equipment.
Councillor Harvey had a hand then.
Did he? Sorry, councillor Harvey.
So just before we move on, I feel I should say that as you received an email today, the LGBL Association of Local Councillors did also consider this document and came up with some similar views. And as a consequence of that discussion, I produced a kind of one pager charter-like thing, which you've all had a copy of as well. And my view is the document that we've been looking at and scrutinising in the team before, did a good job of, of seeking to amend it. To my mind, it's more of a, what I would call a memorandum of understanding, which could go into some detail about exactly how things and what frequency things happen and so on. But I think we still need a more broad hence the document that I produced. And I noted in the report, it's going to get attached to our, to our submission to the body looking into this document. I mean, some good work's been done, but I think it, it needs to, it needs to have a front cover, which is effectively the real, the charter and then supported by some more detail, which will be, I guess, there's some more negotiations to happen. It'll be our successor council that will ultimately sign up to this or not. We don't yet know what the consequences will be of a parish or town council that says, no, we're not going to sign this. And I think we need to kind of think through some of that process before we get to that point. So I think, I mean, I agree entirely that the recommendations, let's go ahead, but I just want to add in that bit. And certainly John Riches, you know, from, from a Valke is pursuing some questions around the status of this document when it finally emerges in its final form.
Okay, Councillor Cole?
Yeah, thank you, Matt. Yeah, as a member of the working group, could I first say how indebted we are to John, who isn't a member, but he went to a lot of work to produce this one-page document. The Magna Carta is on one page, so why, why the Buckinghamshire Charter has 22 pages, I've no idea. But what John's done there, he's encapsulated it all. I don't necessarily agree with every bullet point he said, but what he's done is actually the way we should be going, we should be Buckinghamshire Council to do exactly the same. Just one thing I would draw your attention to, we were all very, very concerned that High Wycombe, we were being asked to make comment on the ongoing situation at High Wycombe, which as most of you know does not have a Town Council at the moment. And we want that to be totally disassociated from this document. It's nothing to do with this. They haven't got a Town Council at the moment, so there's no reason they should go in a Town and Parish Charter until they have their Town Council. So we would very, very strongly ask our Shire members to ensure that High Wycombe is removed from this document.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Stutbury?
Thank you for raising that, Mark. I think you're right. It's an interesting point, isn't it, that special expenses will be agreed for High Wycombe again this year? Those special expenses would probably be the basis of a Wickham Town Council. It's an historical colundrum, isn't it, that they've managed to get all these years since the 1973-74 local government organisation without being parished? It is obvious Milton Keynes Council, which is a hugely democratic council, irrespective of who runs it, has always had this proactive new areas, get new parishes automatically. And to be fair, the district council re-parished a area in Ayrsbury right at the last moment before the shadow of authority agreed it immediately. It's just Wycombe which seems to be this area for some reason, which is always difficult to give a parish to. And I think we ought to sing out for them, because we should give them the right to find their own path, let their own town councillors have their own Town Council Mayor, find their own way in life and, and represent their tier. Because at the moment, their voice is being recommended through the Towns' Committee, which isn't, which is a collection of districts, which are now Buckinghamshire councillors, and the mayor is kept within the Buckinghamshire Council. So it's a member of Buckinghamshire Council ends up being mayor of Wycombe. They need to have it. They're, they're an old substantial town. They're, they're probably close on as big as Ayrsbury is not as big. Ayrsbury's a very new council, let's not forget. It wasn't that many years ago that Ayrsbury had its first Town Council established. There is a president in Bucks and we should, as everybody said, defend them. Not to do that doesn't give the public that extra layer of independent of mind and governance. So thank you again for bringing that up, Mark, and for saying it out. Of course, I'll challenge this and of course, I have challenged this and I am supporting colleagues in Wycombe to challenge this. I'm not sure how many times you can ask the question and be told no or be told that there's a legal reason not to do something, or it's not for now, it's for later. They can say as a community, for some long, it's, it's just unfair, isn't it? Unfair on, on Wycombe. Unfair.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you for that. We shall move on to item five, this display screen equipment. I have a written report from the town clerk. Any questions on that? Sorry, councillor Donahue?
I'm happy to agree this. I think it makes sense and we've got one already, so I'm happy to go with recommendation.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, councillor Stutbury.
If I've missed it in the report, I apologise. Am I correct through the town clerk that these screens are ones which can do, if we so required, record meetings in the sense that they have the ability to do it? Because I am conscious of the fact that one day, there will be a day that we all have to meet again properly around the table and have a proper meeting and that, and and we are now meeting publicly and engaging with the public and, and they can make judgements about our decisions in a more public manner. My worry is that once we return to this traditional meeting, that they will no longer have that opportunity. It is interesting, we probably get more attendees to the YouTube than we ever have to the public sessions of a council meeting. And sometimes the public have paid quite a lot of interest in what the Town Council said. And some comments the Town Council says I've reposted on Facebook and they can get up to two and a half thousand views. So I think if we don't, you know, if we don't seek assurance that these screens do that, or we're going to look at something else, it would be quite a loss for the community, because they can scrutinise us from their front rooms.
This is about stands though, Madam Mayor. This isn't about webcams and TVs. This is about a stand.
It is, absolutely. Okay, so we're all, sorry.
Councillor Harvey's got a hand.
Oh, sorry, councillor Harvey.
Um, yeah, I, I, the guess that I worry about is how big is the footprint of the stand? I can't remember how big the one is that we've already got, because one of my concerns is having just made lots of space in the council chamber, they're going to then clutter the space up. Large footprinted stand of two large television screens, we're kind of defeating the object of having the alterations done in the first place. I do agree with the principle, but I would be keen to know just how big the footprint's going to be. And I remember, I mean, the old ones used to have the huge, you know, the huge cathode ray tubes were just massive. I remember, I think my mum fell over one when she was in hospital once, because it was dangerous. So have you got any information on that, town clerk, please, through the chair?
Um, I've not got the measurements right in front of me, but they're not small, because to hold up those screens, actually, they've got to be fairly chunky. It is like the one, it is like the one we've already got. And just to remind councillors, this is, for the two screens we had in the chamber, this is to now allow the second one of those screens that we already have to be mobile. Obviously, the great thing about it being mobile is we can move it around the room and try different things. And part of the answer to councillor Stutbury's question is, yes, these screens do have good quality cameras and microphones on them. And it might be possible to use them for hybrid, but until we can get several of us in the room and the room's finished, we won't be able to test it to find out. So, and we might have to go to some more complex solution, we just don't know yet until we properly tested them. But certainly being able to move them around gives us a better chance. Obviously, it means the room could be used a lot more flexibly. So you could have one screen facing at the public in a meeting and one screen facing at councillors, there's a number of things you could do.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Stutbury, just that answer. Councillor Stutbury, just that answer?
Yeah, just to say thank you very much, town clerk, for answering the question that I asked. Yes, it is about a stand, but these stands are to hold a camera or the screens and I just wanted reassurance that there was the facility in it. Yes, I understand we've got to look at it, but I do think it needed to be signalled and I'm glad you recognised the question and thank you for the answer.
Okay, thank you. Sorry?
Yes, briefly, the treading wires situation needs resolving as well, because we had a problem with that before, didn't we? So we need to sort out a way that we're going to be wires. I know there wifi, but it didn't end up being wifi and they'll also have power cables, of course, we need to be careful of where those cables will go to, have people tripping over and breaking their necks in our new council chamber.
Health and safety first.
True. Okay, everybody happy with that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So I haven't got any announcements on this section, so the date of our next, next meeting, the full council is Monday, the 15th of March. And from there, we, from here, we can move on to our informal meeting.
Okay, so where's Roger Newell gone?
Can I just confirm, Paul, this is informal, therefore it's not being